For Monday, July 8th, 2024. I ask that our junior house member please leave us in the pledge to the flag. And then Mayor, can you?
Yes.
Can you please say we're going to remain standing?
I'm going right, sir. Please remain standing after the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like everyone to take a moment of silence, please, to recognize the passing of Mrs. Mary Tully, who is the mother of our fire chief, and also she has been a longtime member of the Bath Firefighters Ladies Auxiliary. Thank you.
Manager Flynn, please call.
Mayor Miravida.
Here.
President Ash.
President.
Vice President Ergot.
Present.
Pro Tem Miravida.
Present.
Councilman Hamadike.
Present.
Councilwoman Lisecki.
Present.
Councilwoman Angst.
Here.
Councilwoman Bullsnake.
Excused.
That's right. And junior councilperson Goldfarb.
Present.
Manager Flynn is present. Solicitor Crass.
Present.
Engineer Madison.
Present.
Zoning Officer Sean Laney is excused.
Thank you. Couple of items, obviously, I'm sure, one of the discussions for those that are present. This is a discussion of MS4, which will take place later in the agenda. Before we get to courtesy of the floor, however, I would like to introduce something that's further on in the agenda here, Nurture Nature Center, as a presentation that they would like to do for us. I know Carrie's not here, but you're good to go.
Sure, thanks.
Okay. I'll let you introduce yourself and your title and all that other stuff. Yep.
For slides, can I ask to go to the next slide or do I?
Here, I can.
We'll live right. Yeah, we'll live right. It's for you.
We're as archy as we can be.
It's your magic.
We're just going to kindly ask you to speak a little louder because our microphone is not working.
No problem. I can try to project.
Very good, Bob.
All right. So, hi, everybody. My name is Lauren. I'm the project specialist at Nurture Nature Center. It's a local nonprofit located in Easton. And we have as well our art director, Carrie Maxfield, here. And then two other members of our team for this project, Rachel Huthar, executive director, and Kate Simmons weren't able to be here tonight, but also big integral parts of this project. So, we're here tonight just to present on a project that we've partnered with Bath on for the last two years. This was a grant-funded project focused on community resilience funded through the Congressional Community Funding Program and administered through NOAA. And we're just kind of wrapping up this two-year project, so presenting some of the resources and different products that were created through the project and the things that came out of our partnership with Bath and with other municipalities. Go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So, this is the Create Resilience Hub project, and it focused on building readiness, responsiveness, and resilience in different municipal municipalities throughout North Hampton County. So, this is building on work that Nurture Nature Center has done over the past several years focused on resilience and natural hazards. What we heard from communities that we worked with on our first iteration of the Create Resilience Project is that it would be really great to bring that work to some of the smaller municipalities in our area and help to build up some of those resources and responses to hazards in those places, too. So, all about getting information out, community engagement, new ways of planning and engaging around natural hazards, and just kind of building up that ability of our community to respond to natural hazards. And you can see some of the activities that were part of that project up here. So, roundtable education sessions with municipal officials. Those were webinars or in-person, providing resources, digital and physical, to residents, the people's residents. We have some of those here this evening, some informational cards about different hazards, and some activity books for children as well. We had a youth internship program with local high schoolers who got to learn a little bit about how their municipal governments function and how preparedness and hazard mitigation kind of work at the local level. And then we really focus on, at Nurture Nature Center, combining the science with art to make these topics a little more accessible to people and represent them in different ways. You'll see some examples of that later tonight with the illustrated map we have here. We focused on that throughout this project. And then we developed some templates. So, these are fillable documents that municipal officials can use where they're helpful to complete a vulnerability assessment, map some of their assets, and go a little more in-depth on the community engagement, community vision for resilience, and develop a plan that way. Go to the next slide. Thank you. In addition, this slide highlights some of the lasting resources created through this project that will still be around after the funding period ends. And we have some of those here with us tonight or dropped them off recently. So, we have 50 of these emergency preparedness buckets that have a variety of non-perishable food, emergency blanket, little first aid kit, whistle, kind of a starter kit for emergency preparedness that residents can be distributed to residents, and then they can fill them out the rest of the way to meet their family's needs. We have these artist-designed maps that illustrate some of the most relevant hazards and assets that can be used to respond to those hazards. So, you have a map here from the artist Tom Maxfield, who did a map for both Bath and East Allen and the collaboration between those municipalities. So, these two years of work really touch on a lot of different pieces of our community and try to think about how do all those pieces, the high schoolers, municipal officials, the art, the science, all work together to make resilience happen in the places where we live. Next slide. Yes, just all together, we're focused on providing knowledge, resources, and connections so that communities can make informed decisions about the challenges they face, and then creating that permanent hub that will hold those resources after the grant period ends. And this builds a lot on the existing hazard mitigation work that's part of like the By County Hazard Mitigation Plan and just the work that municipalities are doing on their own already. And we're hoping to really emphasize the community portion, the education, and this proactive decision-making to build up resilience ahead of when hazards are coming. Next slide. And we can actually skip to the next one after that. Thank you. So, a major part of this project has been our partners with municipalities. We've partnered with seven different smaller municipalities throughout North Hampton County. And you all, including Bath, really helped us develop these resiliency resources, pilot them, see what works and what doesn't work. And eventually, we'll be able to pass that model on through the digital resource hub to other municipalities throughout the Lehigh Valley or Pennsylvania or even throughout the country. So, we wanted, first of all, to express our appreciation for your participation in this project, and then just to highlight some of the activities that municipalities participated in in the last two years. So, those webinars I mentioned, conducting interviews with the youth interns to tell them a bit about what municipal officials and staff do. We had a resiliency forum at Nurture Nature Center in February where officials could talk to the community artists and help inform the creation of the map. And then we had some participatory mapping, which I'll show on a later slide as well, and then just providing feedback and engagement with the resources we've developed throughout the project. Go to the next slide. These are just some examples of the webinars that we hosted, so on topics like the National Flood Insurance Program, finding funding to build resilience, and similar topics. And then the next slide. This is that participatory mapping platform, so it's called Community Remarks. And residents are able to follow the link, go to this map, and drop a pin, and then label that pin as like, this is a roadway that floods often, or here's a place where there's a park that provides a natural resource there to mark the different hazards and assets, vulnerable areas that they're aware of in their community. And these maps will remain available to you until November, so if you'd like to continue to use them for engagement, that's an option as well. We gathered similar information to what's on these maps at that resiliency forum in February as well. Go to the next slide. So, feedback from that forum, from the maps, from other discussions with municipal staff and officials, and research by the artists went into the creation of these illustrated maps, and they capture some of the unique characteristics of each community as they relate to resilience. So, whether that's hazards, assets, specific areas of vulnerability, history of these different places. And you can see up here the other municipalities that we partnered with and the artist that was paired with each municipality. So, again, Tom Maxfield created the map that we have here tonight. And I'm not sure if you go to the next slide, it's either Tom's map or it's... Okay. If you click through, I think Tom's is in there as well. Couple more. There it is. Thank you. So, this is the, again, the map for Bath together with East Allen, and this physical copy is yours to display and share with your residents as you see fit. We'll email out a digital copy after this meeting as well, and then there'll be another version displayed at Nurture Nature Center in an exhibit with all six of the other municipalities' maps and with some of those digital resources that I've been mentioning. That exhibit will open on July 20th, I believe, a Saturday? Is that right here? Saturday, July 20th at 1:00 p.m. And you're all welcome to please come and check out that exhibit when it opens. Next slide. Then, the other major outcome from this project that I wanted to highlight tonight is a regional resiliency plan with a template that municipalities can fill out to customize it to your individual hazards or responses. As I mentioned earlier, this really builds on the existing hazard mitigation planning, and its focus is on trying to complement that plan, to go from trying to prevent these negative outcomes to really proactively increasing the community's ability to adapt and to respond to new hazard challenges as they emerge. So, we follow the U.S. Climate Resilience Toolkit model for resilience planning, which has these five steps here, and that's represented in the plan and the template. Those documents, again, will email out to you after this meeting, too. Next slide. So, what is in the templates? The templates are a tool that we're hoping is helpful to set priorities, to be able to say, like, we put these projects or action items in our plan, here's how it relates to our comprehensive plan or other municipal plans, and maybe that opens up new avenues to pursue funding for some of those items. So, the plan really goes through just profile of the municipality, basic overview, linking this resilience work to your existing plans, and then discussing what are the relevant hazards here, what are the community assets we can use to respond to those hazards, and setting some short-term and long-term goals with action steps to support each of those. Go to the next slide. And then the resiliency plan, this is at a regional level, so focused on North Hampton County or Lehigh Valley as a whole, but not specific to the individual municipality level. So, we'll make this available to you, and it's something that you could take and adapt if you wanted to adapt and then officially adopt if you wanted to. It's something you can use just as like a reference or as a way to educate residents as well. But it focuses on flooding, extreme heat, weather-related hazards, environment-related hazards, and then human-centered hazards. And our approach was really to discuss the challenge that each hazard presents, the resources that we have as a community that we can draw on in the face of that hazard, and then developing a plan to those goals and actions that would move us toward resilience. Next slide. And I'll just keep it really high-level here, but just to give you a sense of what you'll see when you look at the plan, flooding is the first section. So, we discuss the impacts of flooding. For example, it's the highest-risk hazard facing Pennsylvania and projected to increase. And then we go through a number of goals that you might consider in responding to flooding, and there are action steps under each of those goals. And each of those action steps is linked to assets. So, saying like, okay, if we want to educate the community more, for example, we might want to engage with schools, local nonprofits, you know, community gathering places where that information could be distributed, that kind of thing. Next slide. Same thing for extreme heat, just another example. We have these goals laid out, and then under each of those goals are further action steps linked to assets. Next slide. And then the rest of the hazards that are covered in the plan, you can see are listed there. I won't read them all out for you, but in those three categories of weather, environment, and human centered. Next slide. So, moving forward from here, our grant funding term is wrapping up, and then we'll have that exhibit opening on July 20th at 1:00 p.m. We'll make that plan available to you. You're welcome to modify and consider adopting it if that is helpful, certainly not required as part of participating in this project, but it is there for you as a resource if it's helpful. We have the preparedness kits for you to distribute, and then the map and that participatory online map as well, if that is of interest. But other than that, I think we can go to the last slide, and Carrie and I are happy to answer any questions that you have. And again, just want to thank the Borough of Bath for participating in the Create Hub project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel? Ron?
Well, let counsel go first.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Very good, very comprehensive. Where is the Nurture Nature Center?
We're in downtown Easton on North Hampton Street, like about a block up from the State Theater.
Okay. Thank you. And do you have a website?
We do, yeah. NurtureNatureCenter.org. And right on our homepage, there's a toolbar on the right, there's a link for Create Hub if you want to read about this particular project.
Ron?
Just curious, I knew a Tom Maxfield that taught art at Bethlehem Catholic High School and served the Lower Salkin Plane Commission, St. Tom Maxfield.
Tom Maxfield.
Okay, thank you.
The Nurture Nature Center is great. They work a lot with Anoxie Creek Watershed Association, who obviously the Borough has a relationship with. So, I thank everybody there for all that you do. So, Carrie, who's sitting in the audience, I don't know if it was you or your husband, but the map that we see down by the clock at Anoxie Park, they had designed that for a location in Bethlehem, and then we had reached out to them to design it, the same map for Bath. So, thank you. Those of you that go down there, the artwork's beautiful. We're getting a lot of positive feedback, and it's nice, this presentation is nice in that for residents and for council to hear that there's a lot of moving parts that involve the government municipalities. I know we all have our favorites and things we want to get done, but we can't ignore all the moving parts. So, the buckets that you have, we can hand them out to residents, I guess you said, right?
Yeah, whoever makes sense for you, they're yours to do with as you wish. Yeah.
And then the brochures, all that stuff.
Yep. Yeah. So, we have some like, some general emergency response information from the EMS with crayons, and then activity booklets on flooding and natural hazards without crayons.
That's right. Counsel, we use crayons for most things anyway. Writing implement of choice, yeah. Any questions or anybody in the audience or comments or anything?
I just wanted to add one thing. We recognize as municipal officials how many meetings you all attend and what, you know, how much you do to contribute to our municipalities. The websites and all, the webinars and all of the resources that were developed through this two-year project are on our website. So, at your leisure, if you want to go back and read through it or see the presentations, the video recorded, they're all there for you whenever you're interested and have time to look.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much for your time and for the presentation. And thank you for the map. It's beautiful, and we'll display it prominently. Prominently and promptly. Ooh, is there anything you want to say? Yeah. All right. Moving on with the agenda, we will now enter courtesy of the floor. Like usual, just go row by row. If anybody has any comments, again, for those that walked late, and any questions or comments related to MS4, we will address them later on in the agenda when we get to those items. So, Mr. Fields, we'll start with you. All right. Savannah? Ooh, you're later on, but anything in the meantime?
Later's mine.
Okay. Krista? All right. Gentleman in the back of the hat? Kathy? Melissa? Okay, all right. Well, that was easy. And we move on. All right, everybody, let's get into the regular business of the meeting. Rule of counsel meeting minutes from the June 10th, 2024, regular session of counsel. Good old phrase of it's in your packet. Did everybody have time to review that? Are there any questions or comments, changes, things of that nature?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Manny, second by Jim. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Let's have it. All right. Pointed council member committee reports and reports of elected officials. So, personal findings and administration was canceled last month. So, there's really nothing to report in that regard. Nasdaqary Council of Governance, Nascog, Councilman Hamadike, I'm looking in your direction.
Yeah, the meeting was on June 20th, and it was to introduce NASCog members to GoGov. GoGov.org, we were using the software and got to get delve a little deeper into the actual software. The presentation went through how a resident could file a permit online as well as receive citizen notifications. The permit part, we went through creating applications so residents can apply, include fee schedules and other call-out boxes of important information. That good later on, create web forms and turn them into internal workflow, projects in-house, and provide status requests from the initiation, acceptance, payment, and approval. Also, with the citizen's notification, that dealt more with billing residents in an email situation by sending out people's bills via email instead of paper. This we do not currently do, but it's a possibility for residents that would prefer that to be billed online as our culture moves in that direction, which is something that we will further discuss in a lot, too, with Brad. But our next meeting is July 18th at 6:00.
All right, so, Councilman Hamadike, you mentioned GoGoGov.
Yeah.
Is it the same as GoGov, like earlier on?
Yeah.
Same thing? Okay. Very similar. Is there any pricing advantages we can get through that, through NASCog? We always seem to be a little bit ahead of the curve on some of these technology things, like with Nixle, we were using that before NASCog, then we joined up with other municipalities in NASCog through Nixle, and we saved a couple of bucks. Something maybe we could...
I don't know, because of the way we have to build out our entire platform. So, this is going to have, if they go in it in a multi-municipal fashion, they're each going to have to build out platforms for their own municipalities. I don't know if there's a benefit or not right now.
All right. Well, as it is right now, it's a sure-to-open-door opportunity.
If anybody wants to see, I also have their slide presentation and all the audio from that if they might want to delve into what exactly is discussed.
All right. Sounds good. Any questions for Doug in relation to that or anything related to NASCog? I'm happy you finally had a meeting again. I think that should be celebrated. I would applaud, but I don't want to applaud the microphone.
Actually, Doug, I have a question. Any conversations about animal control?
No, Doug, we're not. We're applauding you, too.
That's the important.
We need that.
That needs to come up.
That's very important here.
Yeah, the next meeting, if you could bring it up. I know we had an agreement with a company, and that kind of was good for a number of years, and then it kind of faded away, so.
I thought perhaps maybe one of the veteran, local veterinarians wanted to do it. Remember, we spoke to the owner of Hanover View Animal Hospital, but it's something that they would have to organize and see if it works for them, and because, you know, we have weekends and...
Well, I'll further talk to you, Brad, before I say anything, and yes, I'll bring it to you.
Thank you.
To his attention.
All right. Any other questions for Doug? All right, Doug, while you have the microphone, can you please update us on environmental advisory?
Oh, yeah, we had an agreed meeting, a lot of discussion, but just some of the highlights was we previously mentioned the 2025 budget and sanitation contract, and how we're going to start moving forward with that. We went back over key points of the MS4 meeting. Part of the discussion was on how to leverage the environmental advisory committee and being a liaison to MS4, bringing educational information to the residents. One suggestion from Frank was to contact the Penn State Extension to help with presentations and providing further information to get the community involved in ways that they can better deal with MS4 under their own terms with ideas like rain barrels and proper disposal of the city. We then discussed also the town cleanup crew and looking to cancel for their approval to go ahead and create a team that will meet once a month on the first Saturday that'll be dedicated to cleaning up the entrances to Bath of debris after having some, no, with the heat, after the cleanup. We also did some town cleanup, and we saw that it is something that should be continued and hopefully on a monthly basis that will get us a good starting point to where hopefully it won't have to be once a month. So, hopefully, we can further discuss that as well as the council just to say it's okay to start trying to encourage people, residents, to join us to volunteer towards a cleanup group. And our next meeting is August 10th at 6:00.
Yeah, so, Doug, I think it's a great idea to start a cleanup crew and periodically clean up certain areas of the town. You mentioned the entry points.
Yes.
I personally don't have a problem with that. We have clothes and vests, we have bags, we have gloves, the same stuff we use for the great cleanup. So, we can always make sure that the Borough has supplies to provide to the group. And as far as I have any say, and I say, whenever you want to get started, get started, and in time, hopefully, you can get more and more residents to join you. Any questions for Doug in regards to environmental? All right. Community economic development, just a quick change to any of those. Looking to attend the July meeting, that's been moved to Monday, the 15th, from Wednesday, the 17th. Pretty much just my report is going to, in regards to Old Home Weekend, we're getting more sponsors this year than previous years. There's yard signs there. If anybody wants to take one and display it, it would be greatly appreciated. There's also flyers on the table here reminding you of events. Again, it's from August 8th to August 11th. We want to thank Parks and Rec Committee for their willingness to pay for a tent rental for the bands in Kiff County Park. Thursday, August 8th, the Bryan Brothers will be playing out here, actually, in the party on Borough Hall, because that is Borough Business Night. The Water Authority will be open for facility tours from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Businesses will be open late and running specials like usual. Friday, August 9th, Entertainment Night will have a local Bath Borough resident comedian, Scott Henninger. At Kiff County Field will be opening up for the Bryan Dean Moore Band, who's being sponsored by First Northern Bank and Trust. Thank you to them. Saturday is the Community Picknick and Annual Softball Tournament, which starts at 12:30 at Kiff County Field. This is becoming quite a popular event every year, and it's a good time. And for those of you that haven't come out to it, we ask that you do come out to it. You don't have to play, you can just watch. The proceeds from every team's registration fee benefits the Bath Allen Youth Club, which is a good club, and they're trying to get the youth of Bath involved in sports. Saturday, Sunday, August 11th, we're calling Organization Day, your Bath Borough Community Organizations Meet and Greet. So, you're looking at the Fire Department, the Social Hall, the Republican Club, the Legion, the Lions, all those kinds of organizations are going to be out down at Kiff County Field. You get to meet them. If you're interested in joining or finding out more information about them, that's the time to do it. While we're down there, the Wantons will be coming back this year to perform, and they're being sponsored by George Benson Funeral Home. Concert starts at 6:00, goes till 8:00, and after the concert, another one of our free outdoor movies this year, Honey, I Show Up to Kids. Obviously, for the outdoor events, there are rain dates, so I ask you to reference Facebook or check the flyer. But again, to all our sponsors, First Northern, George Benson, My Place... But again, to all our sponsors, First Northern, George Benson, My Place Hates Flowers, um, all your effort and help is greatly appreciated and thank you to the committee uh, for all they've been doing uh, for the events over these years. There's other items that the committee's working on, but at this point, right now, the focus was once again on Old Home Weekend and I'm happy to report that we are still under budget uh, for the year and we keep focusing on that. The sponsors obviously helped that along. Any questions? Okay. MS4 Committee, Manuel Mervito?
Uh, we held a public meeting uh, last month. We also had our uh, meeting on July 1st uh, to go over the information and give a recommendation, which we'll discuss further in the meeting, course it's in the agenda.
All right. Hold your questions up to me later in the agenda. Thank you for that teaser trailer, Manny. We're all on pins and needles. Or wheels and pins or. All right, up to Public Safety Committee, that would be Vice President Ergot's, uh, time to shine.
Manny's gonna shine again. We did meet, uh, most of the discussion was with the uh, fire company, the fire chief. Uh, we discussed the lights downtown and the issues we were having at one of the intersections. The fire company also got new repeater, uh, new uh, radios and the repeater towers and everything. It's working very, very well and the radios are almost half the cost of what the old ones used to be. So it looks like that's working out well as well.
Manny, when you mentioned the lights, I trust you mentioned the new streetlights?
The streetlights, I'm sorry, yes.
Traffic lights?
Traffic.
Signals, yeah.
Yes.
Signals.
Which they were, they were working on and I don't think we've had any issues thus.
We haven't had any other new complaints.
Okay.
Are they still in testing period?
They are. Uh, we need to reach back out to Pendot for their final, uh, their pre-final meeting.
Okay.
I swear.
You okay?
All right. Get you all choked up.
When Manny gives his report, he gets very emotional. He just really know what it took on the hard streets, man.
And any further details are in your report?
Any questions for Manny? Show of hands in the room, has anybody seen any bad things going on with the lights while the state's running their tests?
In the past week, probably that we had their issues.
No? All right, so maybe they are trending in a better, safer direction. When it's spread on all sides, I know, but spreading on all sides, it's, that's how accidents happen.
Yeah. But on the bright side, traffic.
Manny, you're close. Manny, you're close.
It, I haven't seen it backed up like that in quite so long now, which is surprising, especially with Newberg Road being closed.
That's cause they're on Main Street and not North Hampton.
Now, North Hampton, they're not backed up to, they used to back up to Broad Street every day at 5:00.
Now I see them going flying down and.
And occasionally I see it come up to Bobby's house and within five minutes, it's all gone again.
Yeah, it's, it's usually empty and a lot of times.
So right now it seems to be working. Hopefully once Newberg Road is taken care of, whatever that is. Have you even started doing the uh, installation of the bridge yet?
Any questions for Manny in regards to public safety? All right. Monocacy Creek Watershed, ladies, on just something I wanna touch on real quick. I think I mentioned last, last month, um, the borough is being, I don't, I don't wanna say infiltrated, but in a way it is being infiltrated by Japanese knotweed um, in various parts of the creek bank. And Japanese beetles, sure. Um, up by um, Creek Road, um, a number of volunteers in the watershed. From earlier this year or later, earlier this year, because it was still cold. Things were still dead. We uh, ripped out a lot of the roots, knocked a lot of it down, but it's a multiple part process to get rid of it. But if you see that, um, I'd like to, maybe we could put some information on the Facebook page about that. And if you see it, feel free to rip it out. Just be gentle with it, cause whatever you shake off gets in the air and then it plants another Japanese knotweed in that root. So it's kind of a uh, revolving door. But it's definitely something that needs to be addressed in the borough. I'm looking at fall, when things are, are dying off and poison isn't as prevalent, uh, that we can get another group together and uh, maybe dividing concrete various places in the borough to rip that out uh, before it overtakes the entire town and then we won't have streets or anything. You laugh, but I've seen it happen. Questions about the water? It is flowing uh, mostly downhill, um, and as it's supposed to. I don't know the temperature today, although it's probably warmer than a couple of months ago. No questions? Parks and Rec, Mr. Wysocki?
Yes, Parks and Rec had a meeting on July the 1st. Some of the items that were discussed were the Monocacy Creek Pedestrian Bridge. Engineer Madison, Collars Engineering, did an initial assessment on the bridge and there's a recommendation that uh, we will need to have a bridge engineer do structural inspection. Engineer Madison has more of that in his report, so I will allow him to do that. Uh, there, there will be a cost of that of approximately $4,000 for that structural inspection. Secondly, we talked about the Eagle Scout project and uh, I'd reached out to uh, Gage Landis, the Eagle, uh, the Boy Scout that's running the project and he is working, processing paperwork with Scout Council before he can be uh, start on the project, but that will be started this summer. Um, we also discussed the Bath Republican Club seed money, uh, $1,500 donation that we received from um, the Bath Republican Club. Frank and I met with Jane from the Monocacy Creek Watershed on Wednesday, July 3rd, to discuss wildflower, wildflower planting area in Fireman's, Firefighters Park. I have a map here, if anyone wants to look at it, where we're, where we're proposing the um, wildflowers to be, uh, and there will be some, uh, there will be some uh, areas there that we'll make sure um, they are gonna be, they're gonna be bordered so that we won't have a lawn service cutting over our wildflowers that we'll be planting. And uh, we're looking at this fall to do the planting, so um, they won't, they won't be subject to the intense heat. The other item we discussed was our budget for 2025. We looked at the 2024 budget. We are under the 2024 budget right now as we approach, uh, as we looked at the uh, June Treasurers Report. So we're, at this point, we're suggesting that we continue and we propose the same amount for 2025 as we did for 2024, which is $40,577.60. Frank touched upon the fact that, that Parks and Rec is going to sponsor the tent at Kiff County Field for Old Home Week and also uh, it was discussed at the meeting to look at a uh, new or used 20 by 30 or 20 by 40 commercial tent, so that we can use these at borough events with the um, with the thought process that uh, buying, you know, buying this tent will probably get the return on that tent usually within one or two events and we won't have to rent it anymore. Finally, our next meeting is on Monday, August the 5th at 5:00 PM.
All right, thank you for the thorough report. Any questions?
Planting.
Those are native Pennsylvania flowers that are gonna be planted.
Seed.
Seeds.
Of the seeds.
Seeds.
Native Pennsylvania.
Native, yes, native.
Completely native, completely native to Pennsylvania.
Yes.
I don't know what region of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania. Yes, Michelle, you have a question?
I was just thinking of the master park plant, it's wrong, it's in my head every time somebody's planting something.
Yeah, you, you wanna look at those uh, the master park plant so that where you're proposing to plant it isn't in an area that we propose to develop otherwise, so.
So, so the map, the map I have is from the comprehensive park plan.
Great.
Uh, that we reviewed. And we made sure that we're planting those not in the floodplain.
Well, you could plant in the floodplain.
It'll be in the floodplain.
It needs a longer wash.
You still wanna, I mean, especially when they're seeds, you don't wanna wash out.
But it, it will help overall to have it part of the riparian corridor.
Correct.
To have them in the floodplain, so.
And we did say, we obviously confer with, with you guys about, you know, after we pick a location if you like it or you think it should change or.
And I think this idea came from the um, Girl Scout leader, I believe your daughter's in the Girl Scout group, so. So yeah, they would have the, the name of the wildflowers or whatever you would need.
And obviously we'd be reaching out to them at the time of planting.
Is there gonna be signage?
Yep.
Yes.
Educational signage. Like this is a cone flower and its scientific name is.
I don't think that's native to Pennsylvania.
This flower is.
Yes, yes, there will be signs.
In Latin.
All of its Latin species names.
No, but thanks to Parks for taking the lead on that. That money was donated X amount of months ago and it's just sitting there waiting to specifically be used for plants. Hence why it's called quote-unquote seed money, so that'll be nice up there. No, but.
And, and, and thanks for Frank to reach out to Jane at the Monocacy Creek Watershed. She was very uh, helpful in, in us in our discussion as to where the, the planting should be. And some of the, some of the, how should I say, some of the local wildflowers and plants that will be planted there. And she also had some suggestions for the mulching that will be done, the composting and exactly what, you know, how it should be planted, when it should be planted, so very, very helpful.
All right. No questions for Jim? Questions? All right, moving on. Uh, the museum, uh, really nothing new to report. They are talking about maybe getting a, a nice sign made and getting council's thoughts on mounting it on the building to the right of the entrance where that wall would be the museum wall. They haven't said a hundred percent if they wanna do that or not, um, but I'm just kind of broaching the subject with council that it might be a question or request um, in the future. But aside from that, um, again, they're gonna update displays at some point, but really nothing new um, to report. Questions? All right, America 250 Committee, all right, so now you're gonna have to bear with me here, cause I wanna read you something long. Yes. I love taking up your time so much. Um, Bradford, um, in a moment, can you please ha, pass these out to uh, to the council?
I thought we were just passing down.
Well, no, I'll signal Matt, it's all part of the.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for some members of the uh, America 250 Committee for being here. I appreciate that. Dang right. Dear Borough Council Members, as you know, I've been tasked by the Borough Baths America 250 Committee to serve in the role of liaison to Borough Council. I am still awaiting my name tag or business card to designate this new role, but that is a matter I will address with the committee itself. Likewise, I was also under the impression that similar to United States Presidents, I would be afforded the opportunity to design and have my own uh, one-off line of fine china as council president for future state dinners. I host them half of the borough, but I digress. Today, I'm here to report the results of multiple meetings of lengthy discussion and debate. The committee has come to its first of many requests and decisions of Borough Council. As you may have read in your council packet for this meeting, the hardworking members of the committee have narrowed down what they would like to focus on and fundraise for. It should be noted that I do not vote in these committee meetings. To be frank, I wasn't even planning on attending all of these committee meetings, but got pulled into running the meetings. So now I sit there, guide the group through the agenda and watch the discussions happen. It should also be noted that this committee is open to anyone and everyone. The steering committee was created to help guide the committee and lay the groundwork. Whatever the committee is allowed to proceed with will have to come in quote, all hands on deck for the borough and its residents as the borough looks to make its mark on the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. Steering committee members are diverse and all bring something different to the table. There are retired persons, former police chiefs, mothers, fathers, younger generation residents, business owners, and point people at Bath organizations. And all bring a different perspective to discussions and for me, I think this is very crucial. The committee has been looking at ways to not only provide for the current generation of Bathians, but future generations of Bathians as well. To look at ways we can tie into existing projects or requests so that there are, so that we are not looking at going against the grain and trajectory of the overall borough vision. To take into account the world around and outside of the Borough Bath, the development, the traffic, the increasing population of the Lehigh Valley as a whole. Also trying to not reinvent the wheel at the same time. After throwing around multiple ideas, the committee has decided to focus on one of the main parts to the borough. And at the same time, what seems to be one of the most ignored parts of the borough. I am referring to the main intersection in the borough, the intersection of East Main Street and Chestnut Street. As you know, this intersection is big, busy and constantly filled with vehicles and pedestrians, the latter seeming to have to fend for themselves or look for ways around blocks just to get their des, to their destination on the other side of the street. Now, it is very much appreciated and has been a long time coming with regards to the other intersections in town and the improvements. The state's new traffic lights and crosswalks are much needed and a safer addition to our community and we're all thankful for that. We also know that there are multiple phases to the quote, traffic plan for the Borough Bath. In phase three of the plan, the intersection referenced is then looked at. So what does the committee want to do exactly in this intersection? Years ago, a plan was conducted by Lehigh Valley Planning. One part of the plan was to streetscape the intersection. Council will notice the artist rendition of the intersection and how it completely changes the appearance of the entire area. What the committee is looking to do is to fundraise to make this rendition or a variation of this rendition a reality with some slight adjustments. First off, this rendition must be overlaid with the sterile rendition from Pendot as phase three of the traffic plan. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission rendition does not include a concrete island where traffic pattern changes. What the committee has done is blown the requirements of Pendot with the streetscape version of Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, looking to have a stay in the layout with the intersection's changes. For example, in the Pendot version, a simple concrete island is placed in the center of the intersection to divert traffic. What the committee is asking is why that can't be a nice greenscape or a brighter, more welcoming traffic divide. That area in very old photos used to be a traffic post with lights and directing traffic. Why not try to tie in some past details with modern needs? Second, in the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission's version, there are no crosswalks at all locations. You'll notice in the picture it's showing two. The committee would like to add additional crosswalks in that intersection. We need to make pedestrian traffic easier to get around there. Third, you will notice the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission's version of the intersection is painted red or in red brick. Obviously, this creates welcoming feeling and brightens the area as a whole. The committee also feels that this will help slow traffic down. Fourth, this is a very popular intersection in our borough. Many visitors enter through this intersection to visit Bath on their way through to neighboring communities. What better way to showcase our little borough than having a warm and welcoming area? Lastly, the archway, which for some in the committee would be a nice addition, while others seek to disagree. This surely would be a unique addition to the borough as well. This intersection is in many old photos in the borough. This intersection was once home to a giant yellow smiley face, as most of us remember. Let us now embark and make this intersection the backdrop for many future photos of this borough, while at the same time helping to provide more infrastructure in the form of safety. The committee is asking for Borough Council to allow the committee to begin fundraising and planning for streetscaping in this intersection. The committee is aware that this is a very large undertaking and that various entities will need to be pulled into the project. For example, Pendot, our borough engineer and others. The committee has already asked the borough manager some questions in regards to this project. Manager Flynn has reached out to Pendot seeking their interest in entertaining a potential conversation around this topic, if it's so decided to move forward, to which Pendot replied that yes, they would be open to discuss. I would like to mention three other points to the council before I quit. First, the installation of crosswalks would help the future trail system in town. Two, this plays right into phase three of the traffic plan. Four, one, two, sorry, three. That's pretty funny. I didn't even have my numbers in order there. Tough crowd. Third, the borough has money uh, in uh, specific funds which must be used specifically for intersection improvements. The use of this money would demonstrate quote, skin in the game on behalf of the borough. The committee is not looking to have this project. The committee is not looking to have this project funded or even done by the year 2026, but I do have a great deal of faith in the members of the steering committee and the town in reaching this goal and would not be surprised if in fact they did reach it. Instead, the committee is looking to raise funds to see this project come to fruition, perhaps even a groundbreaking in 2026. Let this be our gift to America for its 250th birthday. Yes, there will also be parties in 2026, but the committee wanted to make more of an impact than just a party. Bath, like many other municipalities across the country, wants to do more for this moment in history. Questions? Comments?
Does the sign go on Chestnut Street?
Probably. I don't know. Those are the little details, I guess.
I'm just asking. Looking like you're going up East Main Street to a historic district, you know? That's what I'm asking.
Technically, I guess, uh, historic history.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get hung up on when the trees are, which way goes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it looks like you're in there-
You're right, right. Leaving it, yeah.
In a prior life, I was involved in a similar type project at a board, and, um, one of the board members got hung up on what kind of tree should be planted in one specific area, and the discussion drove out for an hour and it never went anywhere. So, uh, don't hang on every detail that you're looking at there. Obviously, council, engineering, PennDOT would all weigh in on that. Uh, I think another thing to consider is multiple grant opportunities, uh, existing funds we already have, um, but also tying into a couple of people that were involved in this. PennDOT obviously has a say in redoing this intersection, but also this artist rendition is from Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, who allows to get involved in these projects, and other organizations such as the Chamber as a Main Street Fund. Um, so it is a big undertaking. I don't want you to think that the committee's saying, "Yeah, sure, fine, we'll just raise, you know, $70 billion and, uh, we can do whatever we want." They would just be trying to help as a way to give back. And believe me, the committee has been going, you can look in the report about different other projects, there were some contentious moments, some tears were shared, some laughs.
Do you have a second option if PennDOT doesn't allow this?
Um, I think the committee could probably come up with a second option, but, um, I think they would more look at if PennDOT wants to alter it than they would alter their attention to that intersection. So I guess all I'm asking to report back to the committee, if council's okay with the committee proceeding forward. If not, that's fine too. But this is kind of that initial weigh-in from council who has final say in all matters. Except with style hair, but I'll get next one. Any fundraising would be going to a separate account, should be so noted. This would be our public-private partnership. Committee has, um, divided up responsibilities already. When a project is decided, um, there's someone that's willing to chair fundraising, someone that's willing to chair the, uh, event planning or party planning, as you might call it. Okay, well, this is, this is good stuff, so, uh, thoughts, questions, concerns, yes, no, maybe?
My only concern is PennDOT because if you start doing all this fundraising, um, because we know that's a very dangerous intersection. So, and it is in the plan, correct? It is in the-
Well, not what you're seeing there, but is that intersection's part of Phase 3, to some capacity, yeah. But it's a concern engineering wants to look at in addition to PennDOT. So it makes sense to have either a person or two from the committee with Ron and PennDOT's consultant-
Contact Frank.
-to just say, "Hey, what, what can we do here?" Really?
So you, do you think that's the next step?
Well-
Yeah, before, I mean, before we-
Before we said, "Go with it," I think that's what we should do.
I mean, just the way you, the way you express it seems logical for the next step.
Right.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I mean, because fundraising is a lot of work.
And that's-
Right.
I think that's what Michelle and I are-
Right.
Our, our, our thought is that before we go to fundraising, that, that next step that you expressed, Brad, would, I think would be a good way to take the next step forward in, in this.
It's-
To, to assess this.
Yeah.
No, we're not making a decision, we just need to assess it.
It's assuring that they said they want to talk.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a great step.
That's what the committee wanted to obviously kind of all of you first, because if you're like, "No, we don't want to do anything with that," then they know, okay. Um, if you want them to do more, uh, fact-finding and information or report back to you next month, you can do that too.
Well, if, if we need a motion to do an assessment, I would make that motion if that's what's needed at this point.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's good. Ron, you want to weigh in quick?
Yeah, I, I think council, at this point, would just support the exploration of the idea and support a specific meeting to discuss it with PennDOT. We have so many meetings coming up with PennDOT. We have the closeout of Phase 1, which is the four-traffic signal project.
Right.
Phase 2 is the 248 realignment project. We need an update on that because it seems to be a stall. And that may be a UGI issue. So there's multiple times where we're going to be meeting with PennDOT anyway on these other projects. We can piggyback on one of those meetings and talk about potential Phase 3. There are many grant opportunities, and they're somewhat overlapping grants. So as part of the Park Master Plan is to provide, and one of the major goals was to have a circulation, safe circulation between all the parks. There is a Safe Routes to School Grant Program, and you have a elementary school in the middle of your town, and crossing state roads needs to be safer than it currently is.
Oh, yes.
There are Main Street Enhancement Grants through, uh, Pennsylvania Economic-
ECD.
EDCD.
DC.
Those are the-
Why do you idiot?
Get all my acronym's correct. So all those are on the table, and we can start with just saying that you support the idea and that the next time we have a scheduled meeting with PennDOT, this would be a discussion. I keep in mind that part of the, the reason why the traffic master plan was in phases is because as you implement each phase, you reassess the traffic patterns. So we're seeing improvement with the coordinated signal project in Phase 1. We will see more improvement when the 248 realignment is done. And then Phase 3, one of the things to consider was making that center triangle one way and providing, whether it's physical medians or painted medians, but, but, traffic calming to, uh, coordinate the traffic through this intersection more safely and pedestrian traffic.
Right.
I think that other thing too is if council's all right, uh, even if there's not a specific, fundraising item at this moment, there's more research. If, uh, obviously council's all right, if they keep continuing for it, even if they're fundraising for the future project, whatever it so is designated, so that they can use this time to their advantage if everybody would be all right with it. I know there's mention about golf outings and things of that nature. So.
From a time perspective, given where we are from now to 2026, so if I'm hearing that correctly, it's, you're to phase a, uh, to fund a Phase 3 project related to this traffic improvement plan.
You know?
Because that money could all be earmarked too. And it just sits then for that purpose.
Yeah, I think they really are trying a bit to get started fundraising. Um, and, and that's, that's, that's that. I mean, I know we're on a time crunch, so I think that wanted to be reiterated to the public and to council that, um, they're not, they're not being immature to the fact of,
Right.
Yeah, I mean, to do this project, the way you're looking at that rendition might be $2 million, let's say probably more than that, but they might say, "Hey, look, we fundraised $100,000 that we want to contribute towards, towards that. We're paying for a portion of that, uh, going forward, so..." Any weigh-in, uh, anymore?
I like the idea. I just, my only concern is if you are fundraising, that it needs to be made clear that if PennDOT shuts this down, that there, if the money could be used for something different. Just so that people don't sit there thinking this is where it's going, period.
Right.
But if it can be done, I think it's a fantastic idea.
And I'll have that discussion with the committee. I think they're reasonable adults and they can, um, say that, "Yeah, we're gonna fundraise," and, uh, just understand that if our initial plan isn't go through, there's something else, you know, like the one thing was a bronze statue of Mr. Fields in the middle of the palace. Shooting water out, right?
Throwing eggs at it or something.
No, he was gonna be pouring water out of a pitcher. It was very, very beautiful, very touching. Very touching. Very touching. All right, so I think that's a reasonable request from council. I can pass that on to the committee. Any other questions? And please, council, I know Lauren's attended a couple of meetings, anybody sitting out there, it's, it's open to anybody. It's the third Tuesday of each month, right here in this room, 6 o'clock. I'm gonna ask the committee if we can change that because I have a conflicting meeting, but time-wise. But anyway, so-
Yeah, invite more people, invite people to join.
Yes.
Everybody.
You're all invited to join.
It's going to take a lot.
Yep, yep, so that's why the all hands on deck kind of a thing. I like some of these ideas because I do think they tie into multiple things, not just the master park plan, but the traffic and the, and, uh, the welcoming feel to the borough. So thank you for my long-winded, um, whatever you want to call it, but-
I just want to add, you have a great group of people that you chose, so I think you, the fundraising is not going to be an issue.
No, they're all excited to do that, so.
You have one on the-
Motion by Jim to, uh, explore the, um, stuff.
Exploration.
Explore, explore the exploration and the assessment. Yeah, the assessment of meeting with PennDOT.
Right.
Yeah.
With the Borough Engineer Office.
With Brad, Borough Engineer Ron, meeting with PennDOT. And, and who else? Is somebody else? No, just, just-
Yeah, and any related-
Yeah, and, and members of the committee.
Jimmy, was there anything you wanted to weigh in on it or no?
Okay.
Uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, sounds good. Thank you, council. All right, moving on, mayor's report?
I have nothing to report.
That was easy. Uh, public safety reports. Our fearless leader in the EMC department is here with us, and he wanted to bring up a couple of things for us. First of all, I want to thank him for taking the lead with Brad on the cooling shelter, which I'm sure you're gonna talk about. I'm the first team to leave. Or not.
He doesn't look like you.
All right, well, I just wanted to thank you. Lou's been a good addition to the team. I like the guy, you know? He's going places. Hey, don't listen to what anybody tells you, Lou, you're, you're special. You're going places.
Is this Dick?
Probably.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I don't have anything really bad about the cooling shed or shelter. We opened it, we closed it.
It did it gracefully, it did it gracefully.
Uh, the only thing of importance was is that I wanted to recommend that, um, the council appoint Joe Light from East Town, uh, deputy EMC. Uh, he's, uh, the operations and training manager of, um, Lehigh County Bridgesty Management. Brings a lot of wealth of, uh, experience and, and, well, he's, does it for money, so must be doing something right. So if you guys would consider that, that would be great that we have a deputy. And that's, you know, it was interesting. Any questions about Joe Light? Do you want to interview him? Do you want to meet him? Do you want a resume?
He comes with a library. I've known him a long time. He's, he comes-
Resume.
Follow the process and interview.
Resume like you submitted in background. A resume.
Resume.
Yeah, background. With the background certification, just like you did.
Okay, I'll, uh, ask him to replicate your act.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not looking at an interview because I'm not appointing to an authority or a board, things of that nature, and this is, uh, obviously a real estate recommendation. Obviously, we want to see information about it, we might have questions, but in this line of work, we want somebody that's specifically qualified, uh, you know, so it's just like we can't hire anybody off the street.
He's very qualified.
I'd recommend more of the professional services category work.
Yeah. Okay, I'll get that done. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Lou. Uh, zoning officer code enforcement and permits. Obviously, there's numbers. Your packet. Just looking at it, anyway. Uh, any questions on that? Yes, Ron?
I believe there's a zoning hearing board. Is there any position Borough Council wishes to take for that zoning hearing board application?
So in the solicitors' report, one of my items that I was gonna request discussion on in executive session, Attorney Clay of Purvis Communications, was an application to the zoning hearing board made by the owner of 520 and 522 Ruff Hampton Street, so we could discuss that. And you can go from there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Uh, any other questions regarding to Shaun or code enforcement permits? Parking enforcement program, so we have the numbers in there. We're not bagging the meters until instruction actually starts, right?
Correct.
How expensive would it be to get an app for the parking meters? A lot more expensive than this.
Yeah, they want volume is the thing. We just don't have volume. We have 39 meters. We're not a Bethlehem.
Kind of a rhythm.
Oh, right?
Right, moving on?
Excellent. I'll give you a quarter.
Oh, boy. Here we go, we have a quarters. Borough engineer report, um, Mr. Madison wants to discuss something with us in regards to a structure that carries you from one point of a water hazard to another point.
Well, we submitted our second quarter engineer's report dated July 3rd. Be happy to answer any questions you have. There are a couple highlights, one of which was, our office was asked to, uh, look at the pedestrian bridge in Monocacy Park. We had a, one of the borough engineers, assistant borough engineer, assess it, take, uh, initial photographs, and there's sufficient corrosion underneath the, the bridge that I think was installed in 2004 to warrant a bridge engineer inspection. So that's our recommendation. We provided a scope and fee dated June 25th, 2024, based on our current rate structure, $4,000 for a structural bridge engineer to do an assessment and a recommendation. So I believe that would be needed motion, and you may have to amend the motion?
No, no, I think-
Do we have to amend the-
No, it was, it was in the council packet.
Um, so motions as needed, yeah, we'll need that for motions.
I would amend the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, motion to amend the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Jim, second by Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right.
Yeah, Michelle and Jim.
Motion Jim, second.
So then you need a second motion to, uh, authorize the scope of work for a bridge inspection at $4,000.
Right.
Motion for the bridge inspection.
Second. Motion by Michelle, second by Jim. Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, you guys have it.
Just one question, um, Ron, any timeline on that structural inspection?
Within the next month.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to lose that bridge.
Is that gonna be-
Need to hire a ferry.
Is that gonna be involved at all with the boring of UGI going under the-
UGI, we specifically directed UGI to avoid the pedestrian bridge. Their first alignment was literally going underneath the pedestrian bridge, and they wanted a permanent easement.
Okay.
They said, "No, move it."
Okay, good. Thank you.
But we're still waiting on an easement exhibit and an easement agreement that UGI will need to get their utilities moved for PennDOT.
Have they contacted the borough about the type of testing and the, you know?
The testing has all been authorized.
Oh, I know it's been authorized, they do it.
I have no idea.
Well, that's my point, is the agreement authorized them to do the testing that they, reasonable testing that-
They have.
No, they have done.
No, they have. So now we're waiting for that to come out.
The results for what they say is-
Right, they're there already, yeah.
Yeah, they were there.
Just making sure.
That's right.
Any other questions on our engineer's report?
Now's your time to ask them. Now's your time to ask them.
The one thing I would bring up is that all the field work has been completed for the Old Forge street lighting, solar street lighting grant project. We will be creating a updated lighting plan from the survey work that was done. There is a great deal of conflicting underground utilities between water services, sewer laterals, underground cable, telephone, and electric. So we're looking for open spots to put streetlight foundations. So that's the next phase. And then with that, we'll have to go out and solicit revised quotations based on CoStar's with an actual plan that will.
When do you see that being implemented?
Oh, I think it'll be done this fall.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Depending on how long the lead time is on the light pulse. The beauty of the solar streetlight themselves is that they're solar powered, so you don't need to run yet another underground electrical line to each streetlight.
So a question, I mean, the existing lights that are there, we've replaced with LED heads on them?
I don't believe Old Forge has any existing streetlights. That's the whole point why it qualifies.
So then my follow-up question. Is there just the standard light fixture we're getting? Are you going to have a couple of different designs to pick from? Or how does that work?
The, the light fixture is LED.
Right.
The power source is a solar panel.
It needs a type of.
Like style, like is it straight? Is it going to be?
They're pretty standard labels. It's not in the historic district.
Right. Just was curious.
A good example is when you go to Iron Pigs on American Parkway. Now those have double solar panels because they're much larger lights. It would be a miniature version of those.
Okay. Well, there you go. Anybody that wants to see, go to an Iron Pigs game. We're putting a ballpark. I mean, we're putting a light post.
That's all I have unless you have other questions for me.
I think we got a lot of questions for you, Ron, but just to tease it tonight, are there any more questions? Nope. Public Works. Brad, anything you'd like to update council about Public Works?
Just the line painting continues, the curb painting. They'll, they'll do white line painting coming up soon. And then we've got a couple of road projects. Idle Avenue is up for replacement this year, so we'll be moving into that phase.
Can we see that list again one day, when you have time of like what streets are repaired and when, like in the following years or two?
Yeah, we'll put it in August, the capital.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But sometimes residents are asking and I just nod and say, I think so. I don't remember dates on stuff.
Don't you get dizzy then?
Yeah, but that's from, that's from others. Anything with Public Works, questions, council, those in the audience? Now's your time to ask away. Street sweeping. Can we also publish that schedule somewhere so people don't knock on par?
It is.
It is, yeah.
Posted on a website.
No, I know, but I mean.
On the apartments menu.
And I like the website and I'm not knocking on it, but everybody just looks at Facebook for quick info. One day we can, like use the blast that up there for the downtown area if you can do it for like.
Okay.
You know, it's something to put on the.
Sure.
It's every Monday, Friday, Friday, Monday?
Downtown.
I thought it was Friday.
Then the borough wide has it split into two halves. Yeah.
What are the names of the two halves?
East and West.
All right. Any, so no questions for Public Works? All right, okay. Water Authority, Jim. How goes the Water Authority?
Meeting was held on June the 9th, June 20th, I believe. And I believe the liaison report was in the packet. No other information to be addressed at this point. The next meeting is going to be on July the 17th and I will not be able to attend since I will be on vacation and I made them aware of it.
All right. Thank you for your help with.
And it was, it was, it was Juneteenth that the meeting was in June.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Any questions in regards to the Water Authority and council?
My second.
All right. Helped to keep up the good work? All right. Borough Manager, Brad has his report in the packet, meetings he attended and such. Brad has hours logged on various tasks. So anything that Brad, do you want to speak for or forever hold your peace?
Nothing outside of the report.
All right, go for that, but I'll go with that. Doug has a question?
Yeah, I just was going to ask if there is a proposal process to the council when purchasing large items. We should be following or.
Is it over?
Something, what's that?
I think it was over $500 for.
Well, we budget, each year, the budget process becomes your.
Right, but if you're buying a large item, you know, over X amount of dollars.
We have to follow public bidding laws, yeah.
Right, but is there something that like, let's say with the, with the non-truck purchases?
Sure.
Should there be like a proposal sent to council that says, this is what we follow? Because I know for purchases at my company, I know that we're not business here, but over X amount of dollars that proposals should be sent to like council to review and also some kind of documentation to the pluses and minuses for purchasing one item over another, like, or just something like even a heads up that if we wanted to research something in advance of a large purchase.
I think when the MS4 Committee has finished their work and there's an authority per se, then the Public Works Committee should come back. And I, I will say, Mike Rep really led that committee in the years ago and he had, he was doing equipment schedules and we had lists of everything and then we were doing a replacement and that's where that can be born from. So in the case of the Public Works vehicles, so that's a conversation that I've had with our guys and Upper Nazareth Public Works Director, because we all work together. So that's where the idea of the MAC was born. We had talked to East Penn. We have talked to a couple of different manufacturers, body, body folks. So, but that discussion really wasn't brought up, the day-to-day wasn't in front of council. Like it would have been perhaps, let's say, if the Public Works Committee was still around. Does that make sense? I mean, is it, maybe that would be the forum for it so you can become, be more of that process?
Yeah, I just think that if the council in the end is responsible for, for a people's money, then we should also be more advised on purchases. I don't know where we said that we should have more of a detailed process of that information in front of us prior to a purchase.
So, so if I can understand this too, so I guess the first question is what dollar amount purchase is a, has to go out for bid? And I'm just not just talking about a truck sitting here buying a new, I don't know, roof for the building. What, I know it's all different categories, but what dollar amount and then now that has to go out to bid?
Purchasing's over 23,000 and change. It changes every year based on the cost of living. So unless you're on the CoStar's list.
Which we are.
So a lot of we do.
That's a purchase, right.
Right, so that's public, that's our purchase, right. That's a purchasing cooperative.
Correct.
Established by General Services, the Commonwealth, the Commonwealth vets these vendors, these suppliers and you can buy direct. Some of them are suppliers, some of them are distributors, some of them are actually installers. Bop and Roofing did everything. They supply material, but they were also listed as installers. That's why we went with them to redo our roof.
CoStar's kind of takes us on a vetting process.
It takes out the, that bidding, you know, going through public bid specs, you know, Ron would have to do bid specs potentially for a project. Then that's got to go in front of legal. Then there's the public bid process. There's open bid conference. Then you, the council would award a contract, much like it is with your sanitation. That is a full-on public bid. You know the process there. It's months and months and months of going through it and vetting and.
I think though too, for Public Works, if I recall, when we had the committee, we limited the guys as well though. Like they can't go over a certain amount without approval.
Oh, right.
So if they need a lawnmower, they have to come through us. But if they need a blade for the lawnmower, they can go buy a blade for the lawnmower.
Their day-to-day, right.
Right, like we, we did set them at a limit, I remember. I think it was 500 saying you can't ever go over 500 without coming.
And, and some of those reps are brought through to us, you know, the administration.
Yes.
We sign IC. We have, there's rec sheets and everything, so that's how we kind of reconciled that out. But yeah, big, large, this, in this case, it's a, you know, it's a major vehicle, so that went out through the budgeting process over a year ago, if you remember. And then we tackled grant money to help us fund that. And we burnt 77, almost 80%, and now that's getting a little away as time goes on.
Right, so then Doug, the follow-up to you. So then you're saying, looking at, all right, council approved the purchase or is considering the purchase of said item. The next step would be, can council weigh in on the exact specifics of the item? So like you're saying, like compared to the truck, all right, you mentioned a MAC, but can you show me a Chevy? Can you show me an International Freightliner and be able to compare and weigh in on any questions with that?
Well, we kind of just brought up, yeah, now I'm kind of like into, into another question on top of that.
Okay.
So yes, just the entire proposal process. We approved probably, like you said, the budget on it. But then how we went about it, I don't think council was included in that information. Nor was it brought up at any other part. Like I didn't even remember that we, you know, when, when they came in the packet, you know, that we were already so far along and, you know, that I thought that we would have had more say, you know, weighing in on the process. So that, that's another thing. It's just that how it was navigated and how council, like I thought, wasn't as well-prepared because there was no other mention of it up until last month.
And so hearing that.
I don't know if that's, we did a resolution on this as well.
But hearing that though, I think, hearing both sides. Would it make sense for going forward on such things for Brad to include in his report, like I imply for a grant for the truck, I know we just used the truck as the example. Apply for the grant for the truck. Haven't, this month haven't earned anything back, next month haven't earned anything back. You know, heard this back, looking at it, like perhaps some sort of, I guess, steps to say like where you are in the process, haven't heard anything. By the way, talked with, what's the guy from Upper Nazareth, Shaun?
Shaun, yeah.
Talked to Shaun. I mean, with Shaun, we discussed the details of the truck.
That's what he's asking.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to.
I mean, I'm not going to be wrong, but so for example, let's say we need a lawnmower and it's $5,000. Do you want to see a John Deere? I don't even know what lawnmowers are, but.
Cupidet.
You want to see the Cupidet, John Deere, you want to see the two prices and you want to see what we're looking at. Is that what you're saying?
Sure.
So that's what he's saying.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just, that's, yeah. I knew it wasn't like every week tell us what you're doing.
No.
No, he's just, it just sounds like.
Please.
For purchases, so.
So, so is there a threshold like you would like to see? Like do you, anything over $1,000 or anything over $5,000? Like what, what do you want to see as far as that? Because obviously we're not going to put everything through, right? Like if you have to buy a $100 item or you have to buy a $200 item, but like, is there something specific threshold you would look for? Is my question.
Right, so I was just wanting to see what the rest of the council thought, if anybody else has agreed. But for my company, it is like the $5,000. And I talked to, just in regular conversation, they were saying that Moore also already does this, they propose to the council anything over $3,000. But I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah, we can.
I mean.
I just wanted to see.
I, I think, I think $5,000 might be too low with the cost of everything today. I'm thinking, I'm thinking more $10,000. Just, you asked for a thought, I just threw out $10,000.
I just wanted to see what, if anybody decides myself.
No, I, I think it's a good idea if it's over $10,000.
Yeah, they can adjust these thresholds.
Yeah, and we, we should look, we should look at the thresholds on, on annual basis or semi.
Yeah, and I kind of like the thing too, like, I mean, even a report on grant stuff, I mean, how's it going? Haven't heard anything? Haven't heard $10,000?
I think the discussion with the truck started because the, the money arrived, correct?
Yeah, that's.
They asked for a commitment.
We had a amount to cover more than what we said back in 2023. That's why we're here.
Right.
Last month.
Yeah.
To discuss that.
That's why I came up, right.
We were going to 15% commitment, this jumped.
Correct.
Remember that too.
We have a timeline.
Yes.
No, I mean, I think it's a valid concern, valid question. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with putting some guardrails on some of that stuff. And I mean, it's not like it's going to be out of the wheelhouse of Brad's doing it anyway. It's just like when it comes to a certain point, oh, hey, it triggers this reporting mechanism to let council know what's going on. And like anything we do when we ask for those reports, then it rises as too cumbersome. Can we change this or that? I don't know.
Well, how far are we taking? And I'm asking this question because we do roads and things, right?
Right.
High-priced items involved in all that. Are we coming back with, this is our, and I don't know, it could go under CoStar's, but it says, this is our concrete person, this is our concrete person. Who are we getting? I mean, I don't know where we're going with it.
I, I mean, I, I thought, I thought we were talking about like equipment, assets, that kind of thing. I wasn't.
Yeah, I would think, I would be more.
I find it now, but I.
That's a good point. I mean, how, number one, where are you going with it?
What products, what products and services?
And by law, so you, the, by, you know, state allows us to purchase up to 10,000, 10,000, anything over 10,000, if I'm not mistaken. It's three quotes that you need to provide. And then anything over 23,500 is a public bid unless you can purchase that item on CoStar. So that's basically how it works from the public side. You can implement an internal policy that says if you're making a $5,000 purchase, we want to see what it is and show me some.
Alternatives.
Alternatives, sure.
And I was, I've been watching, I think, more on the equipment and, and both on the office of Public Works. I mean, I, I don't know if I need to see, like you said, we're doing a project like for a street or sidewalk or something like that. I mean, I'm not that.
When it comes to grants, grants are, it's really the direction of council. You know, if I, if we're going after a vehicle and I know I can get grant money for it, I go after it. And a lot of that has to be under resolution of, of the, of a community. I can't just go after it. The community has to agree to that. If you guys have specific projects, I need to know. And then we can look for funding through our Borough Engineers' Office or some other avenues, but that's generally the process. It's not that I just go out and willy-nilly file.
Well, I think the other thing too, we, no, so go ahead, Doug.
No, I just meant I didn't, was.
But there was a resolution.
No, and I think it's, yeah, and I think it's, I think it's a, that's a valid point. And as you know, I mean, it's not like we solved this stuff at the meeting that we bring it up. So I think you can work further discussion and figure out, maybe it's something we can kick to PFA and then report back to council next month and say, here's some ideas. What do you think? I mean, do we get some way in from, from management? Good?
Yeah.
All right. We got to make a note for PFA for that. I'm getting old, I don't remember.
Make a note.
Make a note or what?
Make a note.
Or what?
You said make a note.
Or where? Okay. Treasures report. No questions? No questions? No questions.
Spending too much money.
Borough Solicitor.
Nothing to report outside the agenda, although I do request executive session for personnel matters. Also, the zoning hearing board application I mentioned, the zoning hearing board application that I mentioned earlier, which was submitted by the owner of 520 and 522 North Hampton Street, where they're proposing to subdivide 522 North Hampton Street and erect two multi-dwelling, multi-unit dwellings. No, wait, no, I'm sorry. A townhouse on each, right? Sorry.
Two house.
A townhouse on each. But the, the zoning hearing board has the hearing scheduled for August 7th, but we'll discuss in executive session, the attorney-client privilege part of it. And you can determine whether or not you'll take any position at all on that application. Let's see. Also, status report, Attorney Client Privilege Communications regarding the three appeals Beth has down in North Hampton County Court of Com, please, at the docket numbers. Let's see, 2023-09734, 2023-10559, 2024-01039. That's it for executive session, unless you have anything that would be covered under executive session, which you could.
Anybody got anything?
Raise now.
No, all right. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
Back to planning for your meeting minutes. March meeting minutes are in your packet. Anything? March, I didn't see March. Well, yeah, because they're usually. Anyway, we have some members of Planning Commission sitting up here. Any questions for Planning Commission? For Manager Flynn, for Solicitor Crapser, Engineer Madison? Pretty much everybody but like a couple of us. You're not allowed to ask yourself questions. All right, not hearing any. President's comments. I got two questions. First one, the clock, we're still scheduled for July 12th.
July 12th.
July 12th.
This Friday, I think, so.
Wow, we can tell time again. So everybody wait patiently. You can reset your clocks hopefully by seven.
We have to work on time now.
I know. I mean, I'm like scheduled for the past two years. I don't even know if I'm coming or going.
What's your second?
My second question is, last year for Old Home Weekend, I, uh, where do we go? Best Fire Amazon, we bought a mic and speaker, remember? Like, because we don't have any, like.
Yeah.
Did, we gave that back though, right? Because there was something wrong with it.
It was crap.
Can we like, I mean, we got, it's coming up again, Old Home Week. We need something for the comedian. I got to make announcements. Like can we try to buy one again? Like we need something because the comedian's just going to be up there talking. No one's going to hear him. And they're not going to be able to laugh at the jokes because they're not going to hear it. not going to hear it.
Um, what we bought, what we bought didn't work.
I know.
And that was probably like the best one there.
Bobby said we do the sound that for Christmas.
Yeah, but then he has to come every day to this and I want something that's just like, I don't have a father in him, that like, you know, they come hook up, that we just have some horrible speaker and a microphone.
Maybe you can direct us where to...
We tried that last year and he was busy and he didn't get back to me till later and that's what forced me to buy the crappy one, sorry, for my French, the non-professional grade speaker and mic. So I'm asking for council, if we can please buy another one.
Is it in your budget?
I mean, I can take it out of the committee budget, that's fine, but I just, it's going to be used by multiple committees.
Right, we can all use it.
Exactly. And public safety, you can even hold your meetings and say it into the microphone.
Well, before you purchase one, let's compare them and...
Oh, God. Not going to take six months, Old Home Week's next, next month. So we can purchase one if we use the committee's money? All right, show of hands.
What'd you say?
I don't know.
Well, what other money are we going to use?
I don't know, I just, I just, I'm angry because I wish we had our money.
We'll make some calls and see what we can get, how's that?
It's not going to work out, we're just going Amazon. It's not to hear back from people. I don't want to be negative Nellie up here, but I'm going to...
It's funny because the other day I was saying to myself, there's really no stereo stores anymore.
I know.
Right.
You know, like, because I wanted to buy some speakers.
Radio Shack, yeah.
I know, I'm just saying.
Right, yeah. But even if you go to Best Buy...
I can ask some people that are DJs.
Well, can you go to Circuit City though?
There's no Circuit City.
Circuit City.
I'm not saying Circuit City, Best Buy, Best Buy. Do they even like have a department there?
I feel like we have, I feel like we have a karaoke business.
I would, I would make a suggestion that there are some music stores, I believe there's Guitar Villa and some others.
Westgate Mall.
You might want to, you might want to, yeah, you might, Westgate Mall, I think you have...
All right, field trip.
I would, I would try those before you go for a...
Oh, yeah, please.
Circuit City or Best Buy.
I thought you'd use it.
It's like, where do you even go anymore? Yeah, no, that's smart, that's a good, that's a good one.
If you really want to get wild, go to Crazy Eddie's, because it's insane.
Is he around yet?
I don't know.
Oh, my God, no, we're really not going.
Anyway, so if I find one, let's say at like Guitar Villa, as the kids would say, I can come back to Brad and say, Brad, can you use the committee's money budget to purchase this, even though it's not going to just be used by the committee, but the committee had the goodness of a park?
But you'll share.
Would share it once asked.
Yeah.
Like we share with parks because they're renting a tent for us, so there's no question with parks.
But this is first profit, we'll give you some.
But public safety...
There were no profits. Oh, no?
No.
Oh.
Anyway, sorry, I just had a vent, I just, it was building up inside for a while. New business, renovation bid monthly bills for June treasures report.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Manny, second by Michelle. All in favor, signified by aye. Aye, all opposed. Yeah, let's have it. MS War Committee recommendations, you guys are going to have to wait, I got a couple of bullet points I got to get to first. In-progress business, nurture nature center, that was already done. RFP 2024-002, Bath Solicitorship.
It's advertised.
It's been advertised, seeking a new solicitor, right?
Multiple times.
Starting of 2025, so that's just to advertise that, to get applications in so that we can start the interview process and keep it all rolling with that. Wireless communication ordinance review.
Nothing to report right now.
All right, Norbath Trail updates.
Nothing.
Nothing, that's the law to bid, did they get a bid in, did they, are they still alive?
The county, the county retained a design for...
Okay.
They had a kickoff meeting at the beginning of June and we learned that the Norbath Trail will end at Mill Street at the end of the Bath Borough Authority property. And I think I reported on that last month.
Yeah, you did, but I was waiting for an exciting update.
No exciting update.
I just think one month you got to come up with, like, it's done.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
All right, may I move on to 15 of 22 motions and action items? Showing objection, I shall proceed forward. A, as to the MS War Committee's first recommendation, Borough Council desires and authorizes the MS War Committee to continuous research and statistical analysis for further development of a tiered structure, stormwater utility fees outlined as quote example 3 of the Borough Engineers' draft recommendations. So we all know that the MS War Committee reported to council, they had their debrief meeting a week ago from tonight, right? Now, last week, and we're recommending that authority be established. There would be then future steps such as appointment to the board or to the authority, any fees related to that, any kind of logistics and infrastructure things. So this was the first motion or action item, which is looking for, if we're going to do this, to explore the tiered structure system, correct?
Correct.
Any questions? Do we want to do specific votes or can we do, can we do roll call votes?
We do roll call.
All right.
Motion.
Motion by Manny.
Second.
Second by Michelle. We will now call a roll.
Councilman Lysacki.
This is for all three?
No, this is just...
This is for...
Yes, no, oh, yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to back up, public comment on each item?
We had a motion and a second.
Right.
Now, there's any questions?
Comments or questions from the public?
On A.
On A, what I just read to you. Hearing none, may I please call a roll?
Uh, Councilman Lysacki?
Yes.
Vice President Ergot?
Yes.
Councilman Mirabito?
Yes.
Councilman Hamadike?
Yes.
Councilwoman Angst?
Yes.
And President Hesch?
Yes.
The ayes have it. Item B, as to MS War Committee's second recommendation, Borough Council desires and authorizes the MS War Committee to concurrently begin the official process of forming a local stormwater authority, where such process will continue during the regular Borough Council meetings and during public meetings as recommended and guided by special solicitor Leestinette Esquire, the Borough's engineer Ron Madison, and the MS War Committee. Further, Borough Council authorizes any and all steps necessary to create Bath's stormwater authority to the satisfaction of special solicitor Leestinette Esquire. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I, I have a comment.
All right.
Where it says, for further Borough Council authorizes any and all steps, can we just, can we just have all steps instead of any? Any, to me, just seems a little ambiguous out there.
So noted.
So, I mean...
I have a motion to...
I would just say all, I would say all steps would be, you know, necessary steps.
Authorizes all steps necessary to create.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, hearing that adjustment, Manny, does your motion stand?
I...
Yes.
Take my word, yes.
All right.
Second motion.
Second by Jim. Public comment, questions? Hearing none, manager Flynn, please call roll.
Councilman Lysacki?
Yes.
Vice President Ergot?
Yes.
Councilman Mirabito?
Yes.
Councilman Hamadike?
Yes.
Councilwoman Angst?
Yes.
President Hesch?
Yes.
Item C, as to the MS War Committee's third recommendation, Borough Council desires the initial formation of a Bath Stormwater Authority Board to consist of at least three members of the MS War Committee without compensation, serving one-year, three-year, and five-year terms. Further, Borough Council authorizes the public advertisement to recruit two members of Bath's general public to serve on the Stormwater Authority Board for the remaining two-year and four-year terms, whereby the Stormwater Authority Board will have at least one member up for reappointment by Borough Council each year. I would like to add somewhere in there that it will be a public interview process for those two or more people that submit for their interest.
Which is consistent with what we have for other subcommittee.
Correct.
You, you adopted a resolution.
We adopted a resolution, yeah, for other subcommittee.
Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll give that to you, man, we've been coming in first on the past two, we'll give the first to Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second to Sam, maybe I'm going to squeeze you out. Any questions or concerns in the public? Hearing none, manager Flynn, please call roll.
Councilman Lysacki?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ergot?
Yes.
Councilman Mirabito?
Yes.
Councilman Hamadike?
Yes.
Councilwoman Angst?
Yes.
President Hesch?
Yes.
Item D, as to the question of placing all Borough bimonthly meetings on an as-needed basis going forward. This was brought up in discussion, lately we seem to not be needing bimonthly meetings, so it would be in those months as needed if there's something we're working on, and with MS War stuff coming up, I'm sure there might be additional discussions, so. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Sam. Second?
A second.
Second by Doug. Any questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. That as may be needed by Borough Council, that was something from before, did we handle that before?
We have a application from Susan Simon.
Okay.
Uh, you want to schedule her for an interview?
With the planning commission?
For planning.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with scheduling an interview, perhaps at the August meeting? I don't know, unless you guys want to weigh in?
Oh, do you August planning commission meet?
Well, no, we don't have council meetings.
Oh, okay.
So it could be August or September, I guess, pending her schedule and availability?
Sure. Yeah.
No, it's going to stay now during the interview process, if we're members of the planning commission?
Mm-hmm.
It's okay, we can still make a decision?
Yeah.
I mean, because we're already on the commission.
Yeah.
Any...
The interview is during the public meeting?
Public meeting.
Well, it, it's up to the applicant, the, the policy says that, the applicant's given the, the choice.
So if a, if a future applicant or this particular applicant would say they don't want to be interviewed publicly, can council still appoint or we take that under advisement consideration? Because you're going to have people...
No, we're holding back there.